Thank you all for joining us for the regular city council meeting Monday, November 13th, 2023. Now, if we may move on to a roll call, please. So, thank you.
Councilmember Rushing.
Here.
Councilmember Myrick.
Here.
Councilmember Zimmerman.
Here.
Mayor Protem Robert.
Here.
Mayor Bright.
Here. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to the business portion of the meeting. We'll start with public communications. During this time, the council allows up to 15 minutes of public communication with additional communication, if necessary, allowed after the regular business items. Any member of the public may address the council for a period of not to exceed three minutes total on any item of interest within the jurisdiction of the council. The council will listen to all communications, however, in compliance with the Brown Act, the council cannot act on items not on the agenda. So before we get started, we have a number of speakers slips here. We will not be able to get through them all if everyone speaks for their three minutes. So we will have additional public comment at the end of our business meeting, which would be after item 14. So I'm just going to take these in order that they've been received, unless we want to maybe try if some folks would like to speak for one minute, we can have you speak for a minute and then we'll go on. Is there anyone who cares to just speak for one minute? Okay, then we'll just go forward as such. Thank you. First up is David Eckbaum.
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. I've been sitting up there in the 80s and in the 90s and the early 2000s. Five or six years of that, I was on the sanitation board. We've dealt with this water issue quite a bit. I've always been supportive of the, at that time, we called it the third tertiary treatment, making the water drinkable. The idea was to pump it up to Lopez, let it run groundwater down to us here. So I'm not opposed to the idea of tertiary treatment. The problem is, I'm very upset over the negotiations of the amount of, that Grover Beach is paying for this new project. Coastal Blue were 36% were the highest paid part of the three cities. What we're doing, all the time I was in office, we always used the cheapest water first. I think that was Lopez water. Then we would fall into the groundwater pumping and then use the rest of that allocation. We're way under the amount that we used to use in our city. We've done a very good job of conserving water. You are now obligating us to have the largest amount of the most expensive water, exact opposite of what you should be doing. So whoever came up with this negotiation things, I was hoping that they would start paying our portions of the bill themselves. You've just screwed us. That's all you've done. So I think that, I would like to see you all vote no until we can revisit the negotiation parts of this per city, and it should be, I think, by population, if anything else. But the negotiations are wrong. The idea of getting more water is good. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Stacey Korsgaden.
Hello, everybody. Stacey Korsgaden on Third Street, and I'm here to speak about the water. And when I originally had heard about the program, I was actually very excited. I thought that it was great that we had local controls on our local water supply. Now, after seeing and hearing more detail of the plan, I strongly recommend that our council take a pause, and that's why so many people are here and why we are concerned. The number one reason is cost. Are we getting enough water for the value? I should say, are we getting enough value for the cost that is going into the program? From what I'm hearing, the answer is no. We all know that we must secure more water. Our goal is not to get more water at any cost. Our goal is to get the most water for the least cost. And I'm not sure if all of the ideas that are potential ideas have been vetted. I've managed staff before, and I have thought that I've had the greatest idea, but staff would come to me and they would give me, you know, 10 reasons why it was a bad idea. And I've learned that to listen to staff, and we really, you are representing us, I'm asking you to listen to your constituents, something doesn't feel right. So I think that we need to put a pause and look at some potential solutions. The other thing that I told my staff is whenever you're going to complain, give some options. Give me some ideas. So I want to do that. I would say, look upstream. Lopez Lake is right there. Do you know that Lopez Lake was filled to capacity for the first time in 25 years? I didn't know that. So is there a way that we can buy a water source? And I have no idea what the answer is. Is there a way that we can buy a water source that when water is lean, maybe someone else doesn't need the water, that we can store in Lopez Lake? It's there, it's built, and we know that it works, kind of using it as an emergency fund, which most households and cities should have. The other solution that I had is I listened to the last council meeting multiple times. It was a very, I felt you as a council did a great job asking and listening to questions. One thing that I felt, the Coastal Commission, they're not going to give us permission to use the existing site at the sanitation district. And my favorite movie, My Cousin Benny, when he said, "Are you sure about that? Are we sure about that?" I think as a council, we need to push super hard to say, "We have a site, it's going to be inexpensive, Grover Beach can use it, and you know what? It's going to be better for our environment." That's a big concern for the Coastal Commission. So I would push really hard on using that site. And, thank you.
Thank you. Brenda Auer.
Excuse me, I've been fishing today, I'm a little rugged. First of all, I want to, my name's Brenda Auer. I want to apologize to anyone that I may have offended during, with my passion about this project. If I said something maybe that offended somebody, I just want to tell you, I apologize. I pray the council will listen to the community and release the Blue Poop Project, as I call it, and its stronghold. This is a fear-based project. We should be focusing on how to contain and use water we will be getting here shortly that's going to run into the ocean from the lake. When this council joined Pismo and AG, the estimated cost was $50 million, $231. It has now risen to over $90 million. Other similar projects are estimated to cost $100 million or more in more affluent communities, and none of them have been completed or proven, to my understanding. Cal Matters reported last month that this type of project is not suited for a small community, as ours, which is only 40K. It's more for communities of 500,000. To my understanding, the report said that they don't think it will work for such a small community. This is a costly experiment. On February 15th, 2022, while still in the COVID area, the council approved joining with Pismo and AG. Again, that was February 15th, 2022. With Pismo and AG, there was no mention of water rate increases and strange talk about maybe water being less. There's an opt-out clause in this agreement. I believe Grover Beach should revisit and opt out of the Blue Poop Project. Options are many. One is to talk to Diablo, the nail in the coffin, as it was said. Water decel is possible with Diablo's help. The water increase is the only way to cover the project and qualify for loans. The economy has not recovered, and this item should be set aside for the time being. People are struggling to pay for gas and food at this time. This project is fear-based, please, the lake's full. Last week, California was declared drought-free. Last time it was declared drought-free was in 2019, not that long ago. Thank you, everyone, who has participated in the protest to the water increase. Again, I pray the council listens so the community can stop spending their own time and money to get them to listen. Send in your vote, no form, to water increase. It's the only way to be heard. I'm so glad to see a grateful house here today, and that everyone has shown up and voiced their concern, and I do ask that you reconsider. By the way, the lights are out on the corner of Eighth and Grant. We were out there holding signs in the dark, it was kind of weird, but maybe somebody might want to look into that for us. Thank you.
Debbie Peterson.
I thought I'd just let someone see my sign since we weren't allowed to bring them in. When I say "you" in the first half of this comment, it applies to past councils, but in the last half, it belongs to you. We warned you about John Wallace at our South Sloane County Sanitation District, and the DA convicted him of self-dealing. We warned you about Adam Hill, yet you kept on appearing in TV ads asking us to elect him. Just last week, the trial began for developer bribes to Adam Hill. We warned you not to award dispensary permits to felons, but you did it anyway. We warned you about bribes from cannabis applicants, and you said, "Oh, we don't know anything about that." But one of them is now serving time for bribing Adam Hill. Another one reached a civil settlement and was banned from growing cannabis in Santa Barbara County. We warned you that the Dust Rule wouldn't stand up to a legal challenge, and it hasn't. By not listening, you wasted tens of thousands, tens of millions of our tax dollars. Tonight, I'm warning you about Central Coast Blue. Check out Cayucus. Check out San Miguel. Check out Heritage Ranch. Do you think it'll be any different for us? Last year, you raised our water and sewer rates to pay our $2.5 million share of Central Coast Blue design after the $25 million project doubled to $50 million when you had promises of 75% grant funding. But now, in this bait-and-switch merry-go-round, you want to double our water and sewer rates to buy an incomplete project with no permits that has doubled in price yet again and is only half grant-funded. And after all that, we still don't know what Phase Two will cost. We voted to increase property taxes to fix our streets, and you've done a really good job. We're three-quarters of the way through in half the time. But that comes with a cost, because paying that $45 million bond has hit in 10 years instead of 20, and we're now burdened with 9.5% more on our property taxes. Combined, our roads, water, and sewer are among the highest in the county. So it's not just a question of integrity and contracting, it's also a question of cost for the people you serve. We simply can't afford to pay both. We agree, we need an additional water source, and we ask that you take another look and find us one that we can afford. In four weeks, on December 13th, you can make history. You have the opportunity to take heed of the voices in your community and to stand on the other side of "we told you so."
Excuse me. There'll be, this is the business portion of the meeting. Thank you very much. Appreciate your cooperation. Randall Myrick.
Hello, I'm Randall Myrick. I'm up here because I got something in the mail. I thought we all agreed that the letters we sent in the first time, because the city manager's office made a mistake not send it to the property owners. Then I get it in the mail, and the very last sentence says, "Disregard our first letter." Now, is this another mistake on their end? I mean, everybody must have got it. It comes on its own page. You have a little tiny sentence right here.
Sir, we'll answer that at the end of this, at the end of the session. Thank you.
And I sent three letters to the city manager with photographs and a lot of pictures. I was wondering if the city council got to look at them or read the letters. Third of all, I've asked, this will be my fourth, seventh time, I've wrote three letters to him, and I asked, this is my fourth time asking you, what happens if I don't pull my $25,000 septic tank out? Am I going to go to prison? You going to take my land away? I mean, because it's working fine, it uses 10th the water, and it's better for the environment. I mean, I did my homework, too. And I'm going to spend the next three weeks finding out what's going on here, because it seems like there's some wrongdoing. I mean, two mistakes? This whole thing should be on hold just because of the two mistakes they've made. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. How much time have we left? Can you tell me?
Two minutes.
Okay. We'll take one more then. Kelly Phillips.
Hello, I'm Kelly Phillips. And I'm also concerned about the increase that's coming. I took time to go over the budget that was approved by the council in June, and, if you don't mind me quoting, "However, beginning in fiscal year 2024 to 2025, the general fund budget will annually produce a deficit that would need to be closed using reserves. Long-term projections illustrate the need to reduce general fund operating and/or capital expenditures in order to close this funding gap while maintaining sufficient reserves unless additional revenue are generated to support community needs." This seems to be an exact contradiction to moving forward with a project that costs $100 million. So that is a major concern. I, too, got a copy of the letter, and it's the last sentence of it that actually says, "You will also be required to submit a new protest, even if you previously submitted one pursuant to the September 27, 2023 notice." It's confusing, at the very least, but that's two mistakes, which makes me wonder how many people are confused and not turning in their information. So I know we have a lot of projects that we've approved recently, especially on West Grand, between Fourth and Fifth Street. I got the exemption notice here that tells me that it's not going to have any impact on the water. I find that hard to believe. Two four-story buildings across the street from another new four-story building, and I won't bore you with the details, I'm sure you guys all know what those are. So it's hard to believe that if we're really that concerned about water, that we are moving forward with projects like this. Generally, cities have a moratorium on building, but they're really concerned about their water. So they're contradictory. Anyways, I will give up my last minute. Thank you very much.
Okay. We have a number left here, and I'm sure you know who you are. So we will pick this up again after our business meeting. However, before we move forward, are there any clarifications from staff regarding any of, I know we can't really get into this because it's not on the agenda, but as much as we can?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. It's a few points of clarification. First, staff would acknowledge that this is a very difficult issue for our community and for the council, and we approach this with that sensitivity in mind. As Mayor mentioned, you'll have a substantive discussion at your December 11 council meeting. But just a couple areas of clarification based on comments made. First, there's a comment about our proposed cost share of 36% being the highest amount among the three cities, and that's not the case. The highest amount is Pismo Beach at 39%, our share at 36%, and Aurora Grande at 25%. These are based on estimates of water needs that the three communities individually came up with as part of the proposed cost share plan, not based on population, but...
Excuse me. Please let him speak.
But based on estimates of water needs that we have now, as well as in the foreseeable future. So that's where those percentages came from, and that's part of the cost sharing agreements that the three cities approved almost two years ago now, as part of the early stages of the project. It's one comment about way over allotment, or way under allotment, excuse me. I believe this is referring to the fact that we do have 1,400 acre feet of groundwater at our allotment as a city, and that is indeed the case. We haven't pumped that amount in about 10 years, because collectively, all the agencies have reduced their pumping to about 500 acre feet out of concern about the health of the groundwater basin. So in actuality, our supply is about 1,300 acre feet total, 500 acre feet from groundwater, and about 800 acre feet from Lopez water, and that's been our supply total for several years now. There's a comment about Diablo desalinization as an option, and that was looked at about seven years ago, when this project and water options were originally thought about. We, our agencies and the county, approached PG&E about that and were met with a resounding no. Because of PG&E's decommissioning process and the uncertainties around the future of Diablo Canyon, that was taken off the table very quickly. And at this point, that is not an active option, though I don't disagree with the concept about having that decel operation potentially helping our communities. PG&E said no. That is not something that's actively on the table. And then just on the Phase Two, Phase Two is not necessarily needed going forward. It's a future decision by the three cities if we get to that point. It's a future decision about whether we would want that degree of water, about 3,000 acre feet total, if we got to that point. What's proposed as part of Phase One is independent of any future decision to embark on Phase Two, which is why we haven't developed cost estimates for what that Phase Two would look like, because again, it's not guaranteed that we would have to go to a Phase Two. And then just, I do want to comment on the notices, and this is an area that we talked about at the last meeting. We did make an error within our organization. We did not notify all the property owners initially, as we should have and as we have previously in other noticing processes. We notified all the customers, many of whom are property owners, but we did not uniformly notify all the property owners, and that was our error. Once we found that, we fixed it, we put processes in place so that that doesn't happen again, and then we came back to your council at the last meeting to restart the noticing process. During that meeting, council gave us direction to proceed and count all of the protests that came in under the previous notice. Staff had recommended the opposite, just to be clean about the new noticing process. Council wanted us to go forward and count the previous notices, which made sense. However, the notice had already gone out to the mailing service, because in the expediency of getting it out in the hands of the community, and so it indeed had that last line about you have to resubmit your notice. So again, it was a timing issue of wanting to get the notices out as quickly as possible. We did come out the following week with a social media post amplifying that all qualified protests will be counted from the previous process, from this process. We're counting those notices, we're counting those protests, period. And that is indeed what is occurring. So just to be clear, here in this setting as well, we're counting those protests, and we furthermore sent a letter to each of the individuals who have sent a previous protest in to convey that point, that we've gotten your protest, it will be counted, there's nothing else you need to do, but just to make sure that we've notified those individuals as well.
Okay.
And then just lastly, just a comment about the general fund budget relative to this project, and we understand the context around the general fund, which is different from the water fund. The general fund has some pressures coming forward, from cost increases in fire service, police service, our major street needs, which total about $15 million over the next 20 years, long-term facility needs that are not in the budget today, but needs going forward, and those are part of what makes the general fund. This matter is regarding the water fund, which is ratepayer money that funds solely the water system. It funds equipment, it funds vehicles, it funds valves, it funds water lines, it funds maintenance workers who are tied to the water plant. It does not fund general fund employees, does not fund the city manager, it does not fund our executive staff, it funds the work of the water system, and that's ultimately what is before the council on this item.
Those are my questions. If we have none other, David Eckbaum.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, again. Steve has never denied that he wanted to grow the department. When he first became chief, there was absolutely no question that he wanted to grow the thing. Well, we've grown. We now have a fire truck coming that's in envy of New York. We have a brush truck that we don't have brush. We have a dune buggy to go out, how many fires are out in the dunes? We have all the toys now, and so we actually have finally just broke the bank of the fire department. Oceano can't afford us. They had to drop out. Now, Aurora Grande and Grover Beach citizens are paying $1 million for service to Oceano. The supervisors that are in charge of Oceano have said, "Two-man unit is enough." No, we said, "No, we'll pay more, $1 million." Next year, it's going to be a half a million dollars, and then, like, pretty soon down the way, they have plans for another new station, and so we're going to be paying a lot more. So when Steve leaves and we get a new fire person in, hopefully he's a fire chief, let's have whoever's on our council representing us and our citizens and our money be a little more forceful and less toys and more bang for the buck. That's my comment.
Thank you.
I'm not complaining about firemen. We're glad they're there. If I was a fireman, I'd take the money and smile, too. But we can't afford it. We've broken the bank on the fire department, so let's tighten our belts here somehow. And that's up to the next council people who are representing us on the fire board. Thank you.
Okay. So now we're going to move back to public communications. Thank you all for hanging in with us. Leslie Marr.
Madam Mayor, council, city managers. Prior to addressing the water rate issue, I did want to address to the city attorney and the members of the city council that we, the people, believe that your actions today with the streetlight outages and the restriction of our signs have violated the Brown Act and the Constitution. I am not recommending our bailing out of the project for the water situation, but I am suggesting that those with fiduciary responsibilities more closely analyze and scrutinize the project details and demand professional details and current financial information. You should be protecting the Grover Beach citizens. I am new, I've only been here a year, but I've been door knocking my communities and getting to know my fellow residents, and they're concerned. They're concerned about their futures here in Grover Beach and being priced out of their homes. I support a focus on developing a sustainable water source, but I am a fierce opponent of the thoughtless, irresponsible spending by government agencies. The Central Coast Blue project is great in theory, but it's a financial disaster in its current implementation. Costs are grossly misstated, and after five years of planning, you still don't know the extent of the project financials. Saying Phase Two may not happen is not an answer. We all know government, and Phase Two has been recognized, and eventually, we will have our climate outriders state we need this, and it'll happen. So the Phase Two needs to have monetary value associated with it. Prior speaker mentioned about the general fund not being enough, but I'm pretty sure I heard in a prior meeting that you were going to utilize the general fund to support grants for low-income people or discounts to their water bills. So the water, this water project is affecting the general fund. My point is that the city of Grover Beach and Aurora Grande need to review, analyze, and reevaluate their participation in CCV projects before wasting tens of millions of dollars of taxpayers' money, misrepresented, overpriced, underperforming project that will financially cripple our cities. Foreseeable future: $100 to $200 million, $5 million debt service for 30 years, $8 million annually for operations and maintenance costs, 15 new government employees, one new government department. It's just not feasible.
Thank you.
Please go back to the drawing board.
Thank you. Jeff, your last name starts with a B.
Hello, council. Thank you for the chance to speak here. So one thing I'd like to touch on, and I've been really active in the protest process for the Central Coast Blue project rate increase. And one thing I'm hearing from a lot of people that I speak with is, "Oh, yeah, I can't wait to sign it or give it to me," or I hear, "I've already turned it in." And then they say, "Well, how do we know that if I've already turned it in, how do we know what's happened since then?" And I said, "We don't." And they said, "Well, how do we know that it's not just getting thrown in the trash?" And, you know, we hope that the best care and best practice is being taken with these ballots, because that's what they are, ballots coming in, but hope a bad plan. So what we need is accountability. We need to be able to know how many ballots you've received at this point, and we've reached out in the past, and we were told that you would not supply us that information. So I guess what I'm asking for is transparency on the process. I feel like if these are going to be the vote that we're going off of, then it needs to be, what's there needs to be on the table. And we also need to know if anything's being, you know, tossed for various reasons, this or that, the name was off, something, we need to know why. We need to see all of those that are getting chucked for one reason or the other, and we need to verify that they're being, that them being discounted is valid. We need to have somebody that is able to do that, be it an impartial person, whatever the case, but there needs to be accountability on that.
Next up is Ken Lehman.
Yes. First, I'd like to say thank you, all five of you, for returning my emails, and I appreciate that. Thank you. I'd like to talk about Orange County Water District has 2.5 million people, and their bills are going to be much less than ours, and they do the same project, like the Blue, it's similar, they do the same thing. Now, I want to take a look at our three cities. We have a population of 19,000, Aurora Grande, 13,000, Grover Beach, Pismo Beach, 8,500. That's about 40K, approximately, and you may correct me if I'm wrong. Next, we look at the charts, taken from your websites of all the cities. Let's take a look at AG. Fixed rates, they already have fixed rates. They stopped in '26 at $5.20 for 10 units, $6.19 for 22 units, and $6.34 for over 20. Let's look at Grover, let's look at Grover Beach in the same year, '26. You've got us at $8.34 at 10 units, $10.22 at 22 units, and $15.09 over 22 units. Wow. We're the lowest. Okay, next, let's take Pismo. Pismo, they're going to be $6.41 at 10 units and '26, $7.16 for 11 to 16 units. We're going to be at $8.66, no, Pismo's going to be at $8.66, excuse me. Man, we're getting a good deal. We're the lowest rates. I'd rather live in Aurora Grande. That'd be much better. I don't have to move out of California. I just move next door. I think this is, I think you need to reconsider this, because I've been doing a lot of research. I called the engineering people today, and you need to really reconsider this for our community. I really think you should reconsider this, because we're close to the ocean. Oceano butted out because they, one of their representatives said, "We're too close for water intrusion." Anyhow, it may not even work. You need to reconsider, because most plants are made inland more, and then they resupply their aquifers. Also, we have global warming. Global warming, we're going to raise our sea level. That can cause intrusion. I think you need to study these graphs, because I didn't even go to '28. We're going to go 20%, 20%, 20%, you got us at 20% for, to '28. The other cities are 6%, 6% at '36, and we're going to be bingo the highest.
Michael Maker, is that correct?
Hi, thank you. It's Michael Mayer.
Mayer, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, staff. Appreciate you being here. I'm a Grover Beach resident as well. Thank you for listening. Thank you for caring enough about our community to invest in this. I do encourage... I do encourage you to sharpen your pencils and go back to the negotiating table to get this deal more affordable for our city. Please do not allow this project as proposed to continue. The good news, Diablo Canyon is staying open at least until 2030, and began a license renewal process over the last year and submitted the application to the Nuclear Regulatory Commission to stay open for an additional 20 years. Let's revisit the conversation about the desalination project.
Elena Reynolds.
Thank you. I've been in Grover Beach for about eight years and California my whole life, so I totally understand that you have a lot of water and you have no water. I grew up on a farm. We had a river nearby, so we had water most of the time. We have had a lot of water last year. I also have a house in Oceano. It was flooded. There's a massive amount of water that we wasted that we could have done some other way to save the water that was coming over. Multiple years, I've had little bitty floods in the flood zone where I am, down from the sewer plant in Oceano. So there is a lot of water that is wasted that goes right out to the ocean. So we need to look at the water that we have before we look at what do we need to do. Let's look at preserving first. I also, ditto, to go back to Diablo. There's no reason they should have said yes seven years ago when they were shutting down. Now they have reasons to reconsider. I talked to one of the staff people recently, and they talked about putting, I call it a garden, in the middle of the roads to make the city prettier. I'm sorry, that is a center turn lane. It's our money to pay for a road. So we're going to put little planners to look pretty down 4th Street, which is going to use water. It's going to use staff to water it, staff to block the road so they can safely get out there if that's needed. Again, it's wasteful money. Less money for you... Excuse me, more money you guys are spending, which is increasing the deficit. So let's look at not being wasteful with things like putting barricades in... Sorry, they're... I don't like them. It causes me to not go shopping at stores when I have to go a block or two out of the way and then around another big block, wasting gas, wasting my time. It causes me to not shop at those stores. So that's another consideration. It's not using a lot of water, probably, however, it still is wasting money that we don't have. When we're looking at the cost of Grover taking 36%, I did the math. Arroyo Grande has about 50% more people, but they've agreed to cover 30% less. So what if... Who decided we needed that amount of water? Let's look at what do we really need. Let's not guess it. Let's look at the amount of water we are using. Add up our bills. What are we using? As somebody else mentioned, we've been cutting down. We've been getting rid of grass lawns. We've been planting cactus. We've way cut down on water use. So let's look at what is actually needed, because if Arroyo Grande is doing 30% less with 50% more people, they're doing something right, and we're not. We've spent quite a bit of money over the years with hiring consultants. Another place that $50,000 to $100,000 goes year after year for hiring consultants to do projects when we have a lot of expert people here. We have attorneys. We have engineers. We can hire the people locally at probably at a better price and get the job done. They know us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Byron Pruitt. We've already heard how this is not smart money. I'm opposed to this project, but I want to talk for a minute about the people who live on the south side, which I do. So I'm a quarter mile away from this proposed site. So after we go through all the construction, pollution, deal with all of that, then we're going to be dealing with the operation of this plant. So the odor, if you do the research, there are odors. The sound or noise pollution, which was not addressed in the EIR report correctly, then possible health issues. That's why these things are built on the outskirts of a large town, not on the edge of a small town. It doesn't belong here. So this whole thing is like a win for Pismo Beach, not for Grover Beach. And if this goes through, we're going to end up... Part of Grover Beach will just end up being an industrial area for Pismo. And whoever put this thing together on who pays for what doesn't understand how to cut a deal. It's good for them, not for us. So I honestly think if this goes through, the city council will be recalled. It's a bad plan.
As we did last time, we can't really talk about all of these issues. Was there anything that you felt needed some clarification at staff level?
Just a couple of points, Mayor. And before I start, I'd also reference that we have some detailed information on our website for our water and wastewater study, including a presentation that was given at an informational meeting last Wednesday, November 8th. We also have the recording of that meeting available online as well, where a number of questions, over an hour's worth of questions, were asked, and we provided answers to as many as we could, and others are referenced within the presentation slides. So that information is available, and we encourage the public to take a look at that. And if they have further questions, they can relay them to us as staff or to Jeff English at Central Coast Blue. But just a couple of points. One is, I referenced the Soquel Creek Water District facility, which is fairly similar to ours, just a little bit bigger, both in yield and in cost, and their service area is 40,000 people as well. And their project is fairly similar to what ours is intending to do. They're about a year ahead of us in the process, also by 50% grant-funded and under construction currently. So this is a project that is very similar to ours, and we're doing a site visit up there here in a few weeks to learn more about their facility and the engineering work that's associated with it. Also, with regards to Oceano, we did involve Oceano early in this process. They withdrew primarily because they felt that their water portfolio was sufficient enough with state water and Lopez Water and groundwater basin, which we don't have those same three sources. We have Lopez and groundwater. We don't have state water. So Oceano was a participant, but they withdrew because they felt their portfolio was sufficient enough. And then I'd just add that the facility is in our industrial area. It is zoned for industrial use, and ultimately, it's designed in a way that would minimize the odor, minimize the sound, and be able to be self-contained within a modern facility that ultimately piping water into the ground. We are very mindful of impacts, and the EIR does spell those out and mitigations that are part of that process. And ultimately, we'd be working very diligently as the host city in making sure those were fulfilled by CCB. And beyond that, again, I would direct people to go look at the information on our website to be able to get further materials about the process, what's involved there. And ultimately, we'll have much more information on December 12th as part of the public hearing that the council will consider. Yeah. City Attorney, is there anything you want to comment on regarding the protest process and information about how that would go forward, and particularly the counting of protests as that came up?
Sure, thank you. Testimony suggested that these are ballots.